To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I remind everyone that this meeting is being telecast and recorded on Channel 14 and remind any member of the public who wishes to make an audio or video recording of the open session of this meeting to notify me as the chair and I'll inform the public of the recording as required by the open meeting law. Actually, we have no public, so we will skip our public comment this morning and jump right to an update on the NBC project. Did you want to say anything?
So Dr. Dale and Mr. Jodwin would like to address and give you an update on the NBC project, which I think the school committee knows we were contacted a couple of months ago because of NBC's interest in how the East Falmouth School was managing the opioid epidemic in this town with regards to the education of our littlest learners.
And it came about from last spring, an article that the Cape Cod Times did on the opioid crisis, its effects on families and children. In that article, I was quoted and unbeknownst to us, NBC was kind of looking at that same issue. And in doing their research, the producer for NBC News in New York for special projects, woman by the name of M.L. Flynn, came across this Cape Cod article and through, I guess, the wonders of researching Google, tracked me down, to which we had a real long conversation of some of the exciting things that we really are doing here in Falmouth. That led to more conversations with Nancy and then with Justine, really throughout the summer. And hours of conversations, some onsite visit, which then led to the actual taping, which happened now, was that last week? Last week, in which Dr. Dale will take us through that experience.
Okay, so first of all, hello everyone. Nice to see everybody. Welcome back to a new school year. So this experience was one that I've never had in my 26-year career now, and it was amazing. It was something that was quite complex, more than what I expected it would be. So I brought with you, with me, some slides to share with you of some of the things that we went through. First, just starting with the sequence of events once it was relayed to me at our principal's work week. So our superintendent handed me a little message note and said, "Need you to call this person." So I had no idea who M.L. Flynn was, but like Charlie said, she is the senior producer. So I had a conversation with her that lasted an hour and a half. So I enjoyed speaking with her and we had a lovely conversation that then led to a further invite on her part for lunch, that I invited my school adjustment counselor to Alyssa Postilly and our school-based building administrator for special education, our system principal Julie Phelan. We went and had lunch and it said on the paper that I'd said it was a three-hour lunch and truly it was a working lunch where she was asking questions and we were answering and finding more out about their intent. And from that, from that, we then had numerous phone calls in between and then we met on Sunday afternoon for a good bit of time because we really wanted to put to rest the fears that some of the folks who were being invited to come and share the story would have. So we wanted to set a very informal environment. So we did this at the school on a Sunday afternoon. And we invited staff members, grandparents, parents, to come and meet with M.L. and ask any question that they had and for her to be able to share NBC's intent for doing the story. So that was a good five-hour afternoon with just conversation and note-taking and plenty of wonderful enriching and heart-wrenching and heartwarming stories all wrapped up into one. Then from there, we led right into Monday where M.L. and her crew came in to kind of see what the lighting looked like in the building and to see kind of how the day would run, just so I was just to do my job and to do it like I always do it. And they were just like shadowing me throughout the day. And we were refining kind of who would be the best stories to share and how much we could narrow down to meet their needs. So we spent time doing that on Monday and then Tuesday and Wednesday was built around interviewing particular people that were chosen from the Sunday informal conversations. And also, we did a lot of the shadowing again where the cameras were just rolling, following me in what I was doing and then also very scheduled events that we wanted them to see. So pictures tell the best stories. So here's our very first picture. This is M.L. Flynn and Kate Snow. And in the middle there is our, was our parent, Crystal Anderson, who shared her recovery story and has given full permission for NBC to record her formal interview. So I thought that, you know, sharing a picture would actually give you a great, you know, image to know what we're going to be seeing here on TV. Crystal then also gave us permission to speak with her son Josiah. And Josiah is here with Kate Snow. Josiah is a part of our special program, one of our special programs at school where he gets certain kinds of supports. And he was very, very charming and he was very able to share with NBC something that we call the zones of regulation. And that is a curriculum that was developed by an occupational therapist and our own district occupational therapists teach this curriculum. And it helps children really understand their feelings. And there's four zones that we can all be in and it's fine for all of us to be in these zones and we teach the children the zones and what strategies to use when you're in the zone. So they were very interested in that curriculum that is taught specifically within this program, but now it's actually extending into the classrooms because we're finding it's really good for children who are experiencing anxiety or frustration to know that it's okay to feel those emotions, but to know that there's things that you can do to help yourself feel better. Here's a quick picture of Kate when she was doing an interview with Josiah. It's one of my favorite pictures there. It was really intense. You were asked to speak and have an interview when the lights were about this big and they were shining on you and you were asked not to look at the lights and look, you know, at Kate. So that was very difficult to do for me, at least at first. Many of the boys and girls in the school were very curious as to what was going on and we had one little friend who kept asking, "When's NBC going to take me? Is NBC ready for me?" So here's a picture of her little friend Noah. And Noah was so anxious to learn all about NBC that the cameraman was sharing his camera view with him and he got to look through it and he was quite excited about that. The crew also went into the general ed setting and that was more of a complex piece for me because I had to make sure that the classrooms that we went into, that the children all were granted permission to be filmed and recorded, even though the majority of the time they did the back of the heads of the children. So we had to know. And overall, the majority of classrooms had only three or four permission slips that said that, you know, they'd rather not be involved. And so we were really clear to make sure that those students were not involved in the recordings. Here's a picture of the general ed classroom when they went in and what it kind of looked like. So the big tall pole had a microphone on it and it looked like a big fuzzy thing and the kids were all looking up at it and we tried to tell them, "Don't look at the camera. Don't look at the microphone. Just act normal." So trying to act normal. And at front there is Josiah and he was sharing flashcards with his, he was the leader that day and he was sharing flashcards with his classmates. One piece that was quite interesting and I don't think that many people know this, that in our recovery story that Crystal shared with us, she then with NBC's request allowed them to come into her home. And so I remained at the school and they went on to the home and were invited in. And I understand she was making banana bread or something and Josiah was waiting on the steps, anxious for NBC to arrive. Telling the story, we had our superintendent Nancy Taylor was telling the story. Charlie Jodwin helped tell the story. We had Dr. Parkinson tell the story. We had Claire Poole, school adjustment counselor from T-Ticket, tell the story. We all shared the pieces that we thought we could to help shine the light on the opioid epidemic and its effect on young children and families. Here are two of our lovely students who are being raised by their grandparents and they had given us permission to interview them and they were interviewed together as siblings and it was just sweet as could be. And their grandmother also gave an interview that will probably be aired as well. We're not really sure. They took almost 10 hours of footage, I understand, and they are going to narrow it down to just a few minutes. And that's for the piece that will be aired on TV. And there's also going to be a digital piece that's either 30 minutes or 60 minutes long. So we're just anxious to see. It was intense for me because I had a job to do as a principal, but at the same time trying to coordinate with M.L. and give Kate Snow the opportunities that she was asking for and deal with the cameraman and deal with the mic and just scheduling for the next day. All of that took many, many hours. For me, it took me from my family for like four days for dinner. And so my little one, who's 11, was like, "When are you going to come home for dinner?" And so I said, "You know what? Get over to the school late and you'll get to meet them." So she ended up coming over to the school and they said, "M.L. asked us all to get together for a photo op." And so this is Kate Snow with the office staff, the cameraman, our school librarian and my Skylar. So the team here really had to pick up the pieces when I was scrambling, doing all this other stuff for NBC. But in general, overall, the entire buildings team had to really step it up and be flexible and we were using rooms and they were just working around us and trying to act natural when it really wasn't natural. At one point, I was asked to walk and talk and there was a trolley in front of us with a camera and I was supposed to be acting like I was actually talking and it was not going well at all. I said, "I just need to be natural." So hopefully they'll cut that piece out. But that's my experience with NBC.
Amazing.
Can I just add that Crystal Anderson was a student of mine many, many years ago and so reconnecting with her around this project was very intense and pretty incredible. She's an incredible young woman.
Yeah. And I would tell you that I'm not somebody who's brought to tears very easily, but sitting in the room, I sat in all the interviews that I would, I could with children, every one of the children, and then most of the adult interviews. And hers actually brought me to tears. And M.L. looked back at me at one point as she was taking notes and I was just wiping away and her eyes were all filled. It was that powerful. So her interview alone could be a segment all in of itself.
When's it going to air?
They're saying the first week of October, so the second or the third, but I haven't heard for sure yet.
That's really...
Yeah.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Dale?
So I'm sure that in your great presentation, that there's so many of those back and forths that you had that, you know, have been cut out of what you've been able to share with us right now. So I guess my gut reaction to this is very protective of Falmouth and our students, as I'm sure it is for all of us. And so is there any review that we as a district get or have you dealt with any of those pieces? Because, you know, so many of these things that you see of other places in the country, they try to sensationalize things.
Right.
They want to make sure that we're not kind of putting ourselves out there.
Right, exactly. And that's what, that's why we had that three-hour lunch, because I had great fears about it in the beginning. And I said to M.L. very honestly, I said, "I have two different fears. One, that it would be sensationalized and twisted in a way that was not shining positively on Falmouth. But on the other hand, I thought maybe it would be shined so well that everybody that is affected would be coming to Falmouth." And she truly shared with me some clips that they have done and she used two words. She used sensitivity and compassion. And I truly feel that their work is done in that way. And they were excited about us. They were excited about Falmouth Public Schools and East Falmouth School with the special program that we have and the things that we're doing for many of the children that are either born addicted or have experiences because of the addiction that they are, you know, close to in their family. And they are really fearful of what's going to happen to this generation 10 to 20 years from now. You know, if other districts aren't doing what we're doing, then what, where they go and what's happening to them now? So I'm, you know, putting my faith in her based on the conversations that we've all had with her. And she did say that she would share the still shots, that they will be embedding into the video with me. So I'll get to see those, but I don't think I'll get to see the whole footage.
Great. Other questions? Do you have questions?
Yeah, just a thought. I think things like this are, can be really great. But I also think things like this should be reevaluated in the, in the future. There needs to be a follow-up somewhere along the line. I don't know if they would do that. I don't know if they would consider that.
They actually want to.
They've already requested that.
Yes. That is their goal, is to be able to continue. Because, you know, as Justine said, numerous conversations, every one of us that spoke to her, A, spoke to her for hours at a time and B, all echoed that same concern without denying there is a problem. And M.L. actually spent hours speaking with the chief as well, when she was here for one of those first visits. So without denying that there was a problem, that it's a nationwide problem, not just a Falmouth problem. Their point of why they wanted to come here was precisely because as a school district, they felt we were doing something real good and different. And they wanted to kind of showcase that as a way for other districts and those out there to be able to say, "Maybe we should be doing some of these things because it has a powerful impact." And I feel confident that that positive light is going to come out. Because in the course of, I'll say, series, Kate was going to another part of the country and focusing on a hospital. This focus was, "Look at what this district and in particular, this school is doing."
Melissa, so I kind of want to jump on Charlie's comments there. Dr. Dale has done an amazing job at East Falmouth School. She has the grandparents support group and oftentimes those are grandparents that are raising their grandchildren through, you know, addiction or suicide or, you know, very tender, tender things, tender subjects. And she, you know, she started that a couple of years ago now. Last year, you started the Dinner with Da...
Nurturing Fathers.
Nurturing Fathers.
That's through the Cape Cod Coalition, yeah.
And she really, you know, the Connect program is really starting to blossom over at East. And all in the same, she keeps it all very normal when you walk in the building. So I trust you that, you know, you've done the proper vetting and asked the right questions because I think that you care for the children and want to protect not just a few, but everyone. And so I just want to give you a lot of credit for that.
Thank you.
I think you do a great job.
Thank you.
And we really talked about measured risks, quite frankly, because we understood very much from the beginning and we tried to measure, what is the exposure to the district? I think, I think your question is a really good one. And we never would have let them through the front door without having lots of conversations, bringing Chief Dunn in, bringing Dr. Parkinson, so that we could all say, "Well, what did you think? And what did you think?" Because I didn't just want to rest on my opinion. And I agree with Charlie in terms of not, we do have an issue in this town and the impact on our littlest learners is pretty horrendous. And it's something that you live every single day. And so in my conversations with M.L., it was exactly what Charlie said. Our slice is the education piece. She has done her homework in Ohio, in Children's Hospital. She's been all over the place studying this and has not seen a program in terms of the educational piece like Justine has at East, which is the only reason she landed in Falmouth. She did her homework and she started talking to other people in this community before we knew she was coming to us about what's it like there. And so I definitely appreciate it and it is a measured risk and I think we did a really good thing. And I agree with you, Melissa, that I commend Justine on the work she does at East every day.
I had a couple, a couple, I don't know, questions, thoughts. So, but will we know ahead of time before it airs?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Because I'm thinking about the impact that that is, I mean, obviously it was very impactful on the day when they're in there filming. But I'm also thinking about the day after it airs, after everyone has seen that. And it's so powerful and it's going to be painful and the kids, there are going to be kids talking to the students that were involved. And I just want to make sure we're prepared for that, for whatever might come in the days that follow the airing when suddenly everyone knows your business.
We've been having conversations about that.
And of course, I had something else, but I can't remember. So it must not have been important.
So how much notice do we get since that's next week?
I think, I think they'll be letting us know very soon. Last I talked to M.L., she was still cutting footage and it was at midnight, so she's really trying to get this done. She's a worker. She really is a worker.
She's a tornado.
She really is.
So when you hear, if you could share with us too?
Yeah, as soon as I hear, I'll zap out an email.
Sure. Yeah. So I'm going to tiny piggyback on that. So not only like kind of the preparing, like within the district or other calls that'll be coming from other, you know, news outlets potentially, but also that the schools are going to say, "You guys know what you're doing. How can we learn from that?" If we're the model, then people are going to want to know about that. It's going to take a significant chunk of time, you know, to be able to field all of that. So I don't know if there's ways to put together some of the materials that are already out there or even just to think about how to, how to move forward and to be able to help spread that word as the model district.
Or at least have someone that can handle those requests so that Justine is not managing all of them. Because you're going to, you'll be the face of it. Any other thoughts or questions? Thank you so much for coming. We had a really great, you know, experience with this and we all just really wanted to know all the nuts and bolts. So thank you so much for doing it and so much for coming to share it with us.
Thank you for the opportunity. Like I said, I hadn't had that opportunity ever before and it was a new experience and I enjoy learning. And I'm very anxious as well to see what comes like.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well done. All right. Chief Dunn, that's a tough act to follow. NBC News, I don't know. Come on up and join us.
If Nancy was, I don't know if she shared it with you. They were supposed to speak with me that day. I didn't have a voice.
Oh, no. But they, you did meet with M.L. for an interview prior, when we were still working it out?
Yeah, we did. In fact, just, I don't want to belabor that, but they did call our office today and they were looking for numbers on the opioids, where we are so far this year. So that communication piece is going on. And I will echo what a lot, lot has been said here. I really don't believe their mission is to paint Falmouth as a drug den as HBO did for the Cape.
And I think that's why we were worried.
No, no. And I got the same feeling that, and as Nancy said, she's really done her work across the country and Falmouth is a model and I think that's something that, you know, everybody should embrace. So kudos to all of you in your teaching state. So again, thank you for having me.
Thanks for coming.
In fact, I wrote a lot of things down today because I know I'll forget some things and I was sitting in the parking lot and I did forget one thing, but I put it on there. So I mean, and that's what I wanted to talk about, the partnership that we have with the school system here. I've been doing this job for 38 years. I've been the chief since 2012. And I can truly, truly say that the partnership that we have with the Falmouth School system at all levels is probably the strongest it has ever been. I mean, the communication, the partner, the programs, and I'm going to go over some of the programs that are going on. And it really is different. And I, and I know, because I, I'm on a lot of boards for Mass Chiefs, it isn't like this in other towns. So this is, this is unusual here and it's really, it's embraced by the police department and I know it's embraced by the superintendent. Some of the, some of the programs, just I want to share, you know, the quarterly meetings. The superintendent and I decided that we would meet quarterly and go over any issues that she might have or any issues that I might have with the school. So I mean, we've done that. The school resource program, you know, at one point we had two offices, but because of budget cuts and everything else, we went down to one. I think one is working. Jamie Donnie who's doing an excellent job. She spends most of the time at the high school and then she spends whatever time she needs at the Warren School. So that, I mean, that program is great. Because I can't put an officer in every school, I know everybody wanted an officer in every school, you know, we continue to do our daily check-ins, our regular patrols. We do, and we did it all through the summer also, through the summer programs. You had a lot of summer programs going on. And the nice thing about the daily drop-ins is nobody knows when we're going to be there. We just pop in. So, and it's good. And I believe, you know, the staff likes it and the students are very used to it now because there's always a police officer in the school. We expanded on that, I think it was about a year ago, with the school liaison program. Was it a year, Nancy? Maybe two? Year, year and a half?
I think a year and a half.
Yeah. We had, we've got, we have community liaisons and what that is, it's an officer assigned to specific, and some of you may, some of your areas of town you live in or residence or, we have offices assigned specifically to those groups who go to meetings. Well, we just married that with the school. We've got offices who are assigned to different schools to attend staff meetings, events and things like that. But what that does, it gives the staff a face every day. It gives the students a face every day. And that is just for those informational pieces and things like that. If it's an emergency, like we've always said, you pick up the phone, you call the police station, we'll send you a cruiser. Because some of these offices who participate in the liaison program, they work midnight, so you're not going to get them. They're home sleeping. But I believe that's, you know, I believe in the program and I think it's a great program. Again, keeping that partnership and that communications open. The lockdown drills and reunification drills, they continue with great success. And that's the other piece that Falmouth should really be proud of. It started well over 10 years ago that we started this. We, again, were in the forefront of this and it started under the direction back then it was Captain Stephen O'Neill. And we have just expanded on it greatly. Nobody knows when we're doing these drills now. We used to, there used to be dates. You knew when lockdown, it was like a fire drill, it was going to be scheduled. Everybody knew. And even sometimes I think some of the teachers were a little disturbed by them because we disrupted their programs. But that's all changed. It really has. They actually embrace it. We just show up and surprise them and tell them they're in lockdown. Sometimes we've had phone calls to the school and say, "You're in lockdown." Let the custodian put them in lockdown. And that's what it has to be. I mean, we've really taken it to that next level. And the reunification drills, we've done several of those. Those are working really well. Staying in the school, keeping the police officers with our young children. We have a citizens' police academy at the police station that which is really directed at adults. And a couple of years ago, I had some parents said, "Well, jeez, can my kids come and sit in it?" And I said, "Well, if you're with them." But we're really talking about adult things here, from sex offenders to operating under the influence and really didn't think it fit young adults. So we took that to the next level and partnered with the Moss Pond School, half the school program, and we do the junior police academy. And it's geared towards that age. And I didn't want to put parents up by having them, you know, have to come to the police station and pick them up. So we go to the school and we do, we do trips to the police station, of course, because that's where all the cool stuff is. But we do it at the school and we do it twice, twice a week when we run it. And we usually run it through the winter and the spring. And from what I understand, there's a waiting list to get in the class because we had, I think the first time we had like 30. I don't know how teachers teach 30 kids, but we narrowed it down a little bit and, but it's, again, successful, very positive. When we had our open house, a lot of the kids that were in those classes reminded me they were in those classes and showed me their shirts and all that. So again, another positive program. But that was the Moss Pond. We were kind of like leaving our elementary schools though. So last spring, we started High Five Friday. And actually, we started it on the Cape because of a school district that stopped it. And it was kind of a, police chief threw down the gauntlet, challenge to do it. And I think on that Friday, there were well over 38 police departments and 38 school systems in the southeastern Mass that participated in High Five Friday. We here in Falmouth took it, the problem is we got four elementary schools. We took it the extra mile and we continued doing it for the systems in the southeastern Mass that participated in High Five Friday. We here in Falmouth took it, the problem is we got four elementary schools. We took it the extra mile and we continued doing it for the rest of the year. And what we did was every Friday, since there's four elementary schools, four Fridays, we went to one school and I think it was really popular from the phone calls I got from parents, from what I heard from staff, Facebook page, you know, people would say, oh, my daughter's home sick today, she's upset, she's going to miss it. Well, you're going to have to wait three more weeks. But again, and then this year with school open, we were there to greet them and welcome them all back to school and we're going to try to continue this program too. Another program that I started a couple of years ago, again, it's all about safety, keeping them all safe, was the police department purchases and donates Halloween bags for trick or treat. Has safety tips on them, the high visibility and with the help of Sharon, we know how many kids are in every school and we supply them for all the schools. Shop with a cop. We do two of those twice a year and usually give the superintendent's office a call and she gives me a couple of names of some students and she reaches out to the parents. And again, been received, awesome. Most of, every town in Cape Cod tries to participate in it and we take them out for lunch down in, usually in Yamouth. The Falmouth Police Federation Union, the Sergeant Union and the Lieutenant Union and myself, we donate money to buy the gift cards for them. It's usually about $200 a student and they just finish their back to school shopping spree and we'll be picking two more come Christmas time to do the same thing at Christmas and go out and buy Christmas presents with them and things like that. So really, again, another way for us to connect with the youth and I think it's working. Something that came to mind last year for me was, Falmouth is 44 square miles and we break our cruisers up into districts. We have five districts that we patrol, the north, the west, the center, the near east and the far east. And when my officers handle calls, they'll go to the call and let's just talk about the far east. We've got an officer that's out in Wacoit, out at Red Brook Road, probably the father's point in the town of Falmouth. He finishes his investigation, he has to come all the way back to the police station to do his report. He may get back to the station, sit down, open the computer, start typing. Call comes in. Got to go all the way back out to Cumberland Farms in Wacoit. So I tried to think of a better way. I don't have the funds to rent a building to have a substation. So I reached out to the superintendent and asked her if there was any possibility, whether she had any room in the East Falmouth School or the North Falmouth School so that we could install a computer in those schools. And those computers would be for police use only and that way there our officers wouldn't have to come all the way back into the center of Falmouth. And it does a couple of things. Number one, it again puts a police officer in your schools at any time that you don't know when they're going to be there and gives our response time. We'll probably be cutting down a half just because we have blue lights and sirens, people don't get out of our way. But bad things can happen then too because officers are responding and we can have an accident and we may not get to the call that we have to go to. So again, that's something that I'm happy that was embraced and Nancy can speak as far as the school people being, I think it was positively received when you inquired.
Absolutely. I think both north and east set you up right away and you also have space here in the administration building. Because the police department has used the administration building late at night before, for emergency reasons. So for us, it was a win-win because again, we'll have police in and out of our buildings, which is nothing new. I'm sorry to turn my back to you. Which is nothing new, but also I love the idea of having a cruiser parked out in front of east, north and the admin building at any time, at any hour of the night. That benefits us in a lot of ways, just the visual is very helpful to us.
I mean, we, it's not up and running yet because again, I need computers and my capital, which is going in front of the finance committee, I'm asking for some computers. But I think that will be a great program also. And it's, again, it's just, it's just the partnership. And when I say that the partnership with the schools, it is the strongest I've ever seen and I'm really pleased and it's great working with the superintendent and all her staff. Everybody embraces us and just a great relationship.
I think we've done a lot of work over the past couple of years, a lot of really important work between the Falmouth Public Schools and the police department.
Absolutely.
And that continues.
I would agree. And that's pretty much what I got to say and I'll take any questions or answer anything you have.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Chief Dunn? I have one. Nobody has one.
Okay.
So first, I am so appreciative of all, I mean, the list just kept going, all the different programs to build relationships with our kids and I can't tell you how appreciative I am of that. And so now I'm wondering whether or not it's on the radar or if you've ever thought about building relationships with high school kids who might want to pursue careers in law enforcement?
We have. We have, and see, I told you I'd forget some things. We have an intern at the police station right now from the high school. Again, great program. And instead of having her just kind of like sit and watch, she's actually been core re-cleared. So she's actually filing paperwork and she's, and she's doing a lot of, she's doing a lot of police work. And then we do allow her to go out in the cruiser and go for a ride, because that's what everybody wants to do, go for a ride. And we keep her safe, she has to wear a vest when she's out in the cruiser. But yes, we've also offered in the past, it just never took off, but we're not done yet, offering a academy for individuals thinking about law enforcement so that we, same idea. We've had a lot of high school students go through our citizens' police academy when we've had it. I know we can do more. But by having Jamie in the school as a resource officer, I know there's that connection there. One thing that I did forget that I'm going to be doing is last year we had the hidden in plain site. And that was great. It was up at the Seacrest and had two marked rooms. I want to, I want to take it to, I want to take it to a different level. And the only reason I want to do that is because I heard a lot of people say, I didn't have time, we had soccer, we had baseball, we had this or whatever. I'm in the process, I'm doing some research and I had talked to Nancy this, and right after that event, it comes down to funds, but I think I can use some of my drug seizure money from people we arrest, we seize their money. And I think it'd be a good use, is to purchase a landscape trailer and make a mobile hidden in plain site bedroom that we can bring to school open houses. We'll take it to the soccer field, we'll take it to the baseball field, we'll bring it to the school committee, we'll bring it to you. So that, that type of, you know, event can continue and that education piece can continue. So that's some of the things. But I, again, I'm open to anything. If you can think of a program that we can build better relationships in the high school, be more than happy to do it.
Thank you so much. Just thinking about the Lawrence age group too and was, why was Morse Pond chosen for the junior police academy?
Because we didn't have, we didn't really have a connection with the Morse Pond School. Morse Pond School was where the DARE program used to be. The Lawrence, the Lawrence School still has a connection with Officer Donahue as an SRO. She's in there, she's meeting with them, she goes to their events, their dances and so there is a connect.
Okay.
And our officers still walk through their school. So there is that connect. They're a little old to be doing High Five, although they're probably not, but, but we didn't expect, we kept, we kept that at the elementaries.
I think Mr. Bushy would love it.
At the elementaries. Yeah, he probably likes it. Yeah, we're not, we're not, we're not forgetting them. And again, if, I'm open to suggestions, like.
I'm just saying that's a really good age.
It is, it is a good age, but what we did was we reached out to the schools that had no police connection.
Yeah.
And we, and we tried to bridge that gap. So that's why.
And Morse Pond is often forgotten because it's that middle age, it's that five, six. So we covered the elementaries, we covered Lawrence and the high school because we had police in and out of there. Remember, we had two officers at one point, one at Lawrence, one at the high school. So they had some exposure and Morse Pond had nothing. And it was really interesting, the response that we got from Morse Pond. I think it was higher than 30. I think that's.
Yeah, I know, I know the room was, I know the library was full.
Yeah.
But yeah, and again, the important thing was to gear it towards that age group. They don't need to know about operating under the influence, they're not even ready to drive. And, you know, we've done computer cyber crimes with them, talking about, we had somebody from the sheriff's department that came down and talked about it. We do talk about, you know, again, they want to see the guns and all of, you know, they want to see all the toys. But, but we do teach them, there is an education piece through it all, the K-9 demonstrations, the stranger piece, the internet, gearing it right towards that age group. And I think it's been really positive.
Any last questions?
Yeah. On the school resource officer. Has the state ever provided you with any grant dollars?
No.
Okay. Typical. Thank you. I was in Pennsylvania and we started out with a school resource officer and it was grant dollars from the state of Pennsylvania. Grant money usually doesn't last very long.
Correct.
So then it became a reciprocal agreement with the school district as well as the partnership.
Which is what we have during, during the school year. It comes out of Nancy's budget and then when school ends, it's back to my budget.
Yeah.
And to answer that, no. And if we step back, again, a lot of towns aren't doing it because number one, they can't afford it.
Yeah.
Or they don't have the manpower. And that was one of the six pillars in the, in President Obama's presentation on 21st Century Policing was get back in the schools. And we've been doing it for years. I mean, we had to pull school res, we had to, but again, because of manpower issues in the police department, we had two and we had 66 people. I'm only funded for 58. So if I give you two, I mean, I'm down to 56 officers. So because of budget reasons, we pulled one. And we actually pulled two for a while. You had nobody and we just did that, but we were able to at least get back to one. And actually, I, you have to, you have to applaud superintendent and the principals in those schools. When we had to towards the end there, they were bored. They had nothing to do. The school, I mean, you know, I think Joe Driscoll was the principal, I forget who was at the Lawrence School. Were you at the Lawrence School? You were at the Lawrence School.
Yeah.
She was at the Lawrence School.
I was way too awesome with her.
I apologize. And my, my school resource officers, they would come back to the station, they say, there's nothing to do, the kids are all behaving, they've either suspended them or they've disciplined them, they're doing, they're doing great things and there's no problem, nobody's stealing anything. So, so that's why we really did whittle it down to one and it's, and it's worked. So kudos to Nancy and Joe Driscoll for doing a great job.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for taking the time and coming to have with us. We really appreciate it.
Great, sir.
Thank you, Chief Dunn.
Have a great day.
Kelly, I got a question for Nancy.
Yeah.
I don't, speaking of Morse Pond and drug education slash prevention, do you want to speak at all to the kind of thing we did with the sixth graders last year and if we're going to spread, spread that out?
If you'd like to, I think we did talk about that at the school committee meeting when Tim McGoughlin's here.
Yeah, I think we had an update on it, but if there's something, if it's going to come up again, maybe we could have it on an agenda if it's something that's.
I think they do want to look at doing it again.
For looking for next year.
Okay. But did you want to spread it to other grades?
I think Mr. Bushy is looking at that and I think he's meeting with Mr. McGoughlin. I don't know if you want to weigh in on that?
Just we'll wait until the meeting.
Until you all meet. Okay. But yes, I know they are considering it.
Okay, next on our agenda, we've got the update, excuse us, on the committee on MCAS computer testing. Nancy, this is you, right?
Yes. So if you look in your packet, it's a pinkish color. You'll see the memorandum from the Department of Education and it's around computer-based testing versus the paper-based testing. We have been doing the computer-based testing. I, I am supposed to let you know that I want to recommend that we continue with computer-based testing and I just have to go online and fill out the application by October 13th. I wanted to put it in front of you if you have any questions. Cindy couldn't be with us tonight, she had a family emergency, but both Zach and Sonya are here. Sonya with the seventh and eighth grade, Zach with elementary. This is not new, but I did have to bring it to the committee's attention.
Are there any thoughts, questions?
Yeah, I just, I was looking for a clarification that, and I'm sure, this is confusing to me, but since you've probably gone through this already, it would be easier, that it was saying that if the students who have accommodations who need paper testing will be able to get that, but then do you also have to ask for a waiver through this because some subset will need paper, paper tests?
I think we file that when we assign the accommodations.
Okay.
So we'll go to the computer base, but if a child does need it, we do fill out, we notify Desi that there was an accommodation to the testing.
Any other questions? Great, so we don't need to vote on that.
No.
But thanks for letting us know. Next is review and act on the revised budget development flow chart.
So you will see in your packet a white sheet and you'll see that it was revised in red. It says on 9/14/17. The committee had asked to add the budget subcommittee dates in the flow chart, so they have been added. And I would recommend that you approve the budget development flow chart.
We have a motion to approve the budget development flow chart with the changes.
I will make a motion to approve the budget development flow chart.
Show a second.
I'll second that.
Whoa, everybody wants a second. Everybody wants part of the budget. I don't know who actually got it.
Bill's second.
Any discussion about, about the changes or the content?
It looks like the budget presentation was put into.
Yep.
Yeah. Great. All in favor of the budget, approving the budget development flow chart?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great, unanimous. Thanks, Patrick, for making those changes.
Thank you.
Next, we have to act on the $500 Shaw's donation to the football program.
So Shaw's has made a donation to the Falmouth football program and I would act that you accept the $500 donation.
Is there a motion to accept the donation from Shaw's?
Motion to accept.
Go ahead.
And a second?
Second.
Yep.
Is there a specific thing that $500 is going to be used for with this?
I don't think so.
No. Could be used however.
Just for football. Yeah.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor of approving the donation from Shaw's?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Unanimous. Great. Routine business, the minutes. It's the new one that Sharon had for us tonight, the crazy pink sheet from.
Different than what we had in the.
There were two small changes that I had asked for. One was it said chair instead of, it said chairman instead of chair and it said alcohol something instead of alcohol prevention under the issues that we have, had mentioned at the retreat. So those were the only two, just two tiny changes, that's the only difference between the one you had and this one. Is there a motion to approve the minute?
I had a tiny change too.
So let's get a motion and then we'll do the changes after.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September 12.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, now discussion. Tell us, Andrea, what have you got?
It was just that there was, talking about Sonya's report says that John had questioned a piece of it, that, that was me, I didn't want to settle him with not knowing the difference between the two programs.
Where, I'm sorry, where is it?
It's number two on page three about what's heard. Does this tell your?
Oh, okay. Number two.
John did ask a question though around that time.
I thought he did too.
He did. It was about whether that was taking away from other students' time in the classroom.
It was about, um, whether that was taking away from other students' time in the classroom.
Okay, so we'll just reassign this as you so that John didn't ask a question he didn't ask? Any other edits? All in fa-- in favor of approving the minutes from September 12th with the one change?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous. Uh, a report from our superintendent.
Okay. So you can see in my briefing, the things that I have been up to in the last two weeks. Um, certainly setting up goals, meetings with the principals. Um, Patrick Murphy and I met with the finance committee to review our capital plan and that was very helpful. I am working on my own goals and I have met with the, the chair of the evaluation subcommittee to review those. And then we have a formal meeting on October 3rd with the whole committee. What I'd like to just call out quickly is in your packets, I have included, um, the Attorney General's guidance regarding the rights and obligations of schools in response to ICE requests for access and information. I just think it's important for everyone to review that. I have reviewed it with my central office administrators as well as the principals. Um, and the other piece that I would just add to that is that the Falmouth Police Department, their message, Chief Dunn's message regarding ICE, and I think it's important that the school committee have that. My principals have them, central office has them. Um, they are not doing anything differently regarding ICE coming into, into a building.
This is nice that he took the time to put this together.
I think it's great to have, uh, in the buildings as a reminder for people.
Any questions about just the ICE piece?
Yes.
Yeah.
So you said that you talked to central office and principals.
Yes.
I was sort of wondering about, um, is there any of this information being disseminated to people who are sort of the ones that are going to, you know, be right there at the, um, at the office when somebody might come in? Because I noticed something very specific about, well, if there's this type of warrant, but it can't be at this type.
Right.
So that, when someone comes in, that's a very nerve-wracking situation. And to be able to have some type of training to be comfortable with, um, you know, this is our policy and procedure so that the people who are on the front lines, you know...
The secretaries, receptionists, clerks would go to an administrator immediately. That's been my experience. That's what we talked with, about with the principals, that anytime anything comes up like this, or if there's even a question as to whether the person presenting in front of you has access to a child, it is also, it was, it's always sent off to an administrator to manage. And in this type of situation, as you can see, it would come to my office and I would get legal involved regarding any kind of a, a warrant. And legal would make that decision. But a secretary would call, um, basically, you know, wait for some time, call an administrator immediately and they would manage an issue like this.
Great. Leah.
So my question is, how do we get this information out to families? This is a lot of, a lot of technical information.
Yes.
Um, but really for families to know that our schools are safe places regardless of immigration status, that that's not asked. Um, that's not part of what our education system is about. And, um, just making sure that they know, we will always do what's best for their kids and keep them safe.
And I think that happens through the ELD program. Um, identifying other kids that may have this concern is a very difficult thing to do because we don't ask immigration status. We don't know. The only population that we share it with would be through the ELD department. I mean, it, you can do a general piece, um, with all kids, but the targeted families, we don't know them all.
Because a lot of them could not be in the ELD program also.
Right. So giving the information out about in terms of us being safe schools, addressing this particular piece, I think I'd have to go back and look at that, Leah.
Yeah.
But we can certainly do that at our next admin council meeting, which I have all the principals there.
Okay.
Just reinforcing that, uh, you know, to use their language, their sensitive locations, I think is the word.
Right, yes.
And that we are protective.
And that information about sensitive locations is really important because there was talk that, um, President Trump was getting rid of the sensitive locations and they, that did not happen. And so there was a lot of anxiety around that piece for a little while, so.
And it has not happened and there, we would have an advisory if anything were to shift on how we are to manage kids. So I think the principals are very clear on this, but your point about, um, families, we can certainly take a look at, closer look at.
I think it'd be great for families to get this information.
I do too, or, or an easier version to understand, yeah. Because I think that that's a really good point, you know, how do we, how do we as a community let our families and our kids know this really important information? And how do they know, especially if it's not coming in their, in their own language? I just, I just want everyone to know that our schools are safe places. So how do we communicate that when we don't know who to communicate it to?
That's where it gets tricky. But if we give it to all kids.
Yeah.
That it's, that it is a safe place. And it also is tricky with custody orders, quite frankly.
Yeah.
So that's a whole nother layer that we manage.
And I think it's really important for non-immigrant families to also know this information. So I think that in that kind of blanket of getting it out to everybody, it, it's an easier process to get it out to everybody and it's also, um, probably a very helpful process.
And within that same thing, to not just have the administrators understand the process, but to have everyone, from the people at the desk to the teachers, to understand that there is a thing where you're safe in this school. Just because they're the ones that are engaging in those conversations, you know, informally, day to day. So for them to know as well, because I didn't know any of this. So this was all new information for me. I had a couple of questions. There are a couple of places that say schools should be proactive in reviewing their policies. Um, and I just want to make sure that we are at least doing it if we haven't already done it, um, to ensure including appropriate steps to take if a student cannot safely return home because if his or her parent has been, whatever, is no longer, is not available.
Is no longer there.
And whether or not we have, we've done that, um, or if we're in the process of doing it. And also that it says that we review our directory information and consider eliminating certain pieces from directory information because that's the stuff that people can have.
That goes out.
Right, right. So I just wanted to make note of those two because those seem like things that are on us to handle. And I don't know if it's, if it's actual policy, committee policy, or if it's just procedural policy.
We talked about it in the beginning stages of like, yeah.
So policy, we'll take that up, yeah.
And we'd also might want to look at MAS C and see what they have.
Right.
One, one piece that I do find very helpful that I, I don't think, I know I didn't know as a parent, um, is about the fact that for the directory information, that anybody could come and get a list of information, or the, it's with names and addresses, is that what?
Uh, I think directory is name, year of graduation, honors, um, sports. There's a whole...
And there's something about like, like you'd know what precinct people were in.
Yep.
And, but you can opt out of that. But you do have to opt out to not have that information shared. And I think a lot of time, this is not, I know, I didn't know as a parent, but I think a lot of parents don't know that, that your information can be, your child's information will be shared if someone comes and asks for it. So...
So defining what directory information is and where it can go. However, I think this, Zach, go ahead. I think this year is the first year, I think we've had two people opt out.
Okay. Because I think, um, my takeaway from this was that I was not alone in people not knowing that. And this is very clear here, that you have to opt out for that and making sure families know that. So I wonder if maybe in this information too, of somehow explicitly telling families about that too.
Do you want to speak to the handbook?
Sure, all of our student handbooks this year have exactly what our directory information is. And it gives directions to parents on what they can do if they want to opt out of all or of the list. They can select which ones they want to opt out of as well. So that's in all the handbooks.
Okay.
Great.
Is military recruiting part of that handbook?
Uh, off the top of my head, I'm not sure.
I'm, I'm just curious.
I'm not sure.
Because I know that's...
I think we interrupted you midway. I'm sorry. Do you have anything else that you wanted to do in your report? We stopped to talk about ICE.
No, that's fine. The last piece is that the Carousel of Light has come to a successful end. Their lease is up and given the weather and their lease, they are no longer operating at the Mullen Hall School.
Great. Any questions for Nancy? Okay. Um, report, uh, from Assistant Superintendent and Director of Curriculum. Sonya, do you have anything that you would like to highlight from your report?
Um, just, I, I find it interesting the way that they're now regarding the former MCAS as a legacy MCAS. The new language, when we start to talk about the score release and then our computer-based assessments or our new assessments are next generation. They previously called them 2.0. So I kind of, I added it in quotation marks to kind of separate them because when we talk about, um, the grade 10 results, we're talking about the traditional, traditional legacy when they come out. And then for anything else, uh, up through grade eight, uh, we're going to be talking about next gen. So it's just a little bit of a difference in how we talk about the scores. Uh, other than that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions for Sonya?
Yeah. Um, you were talking about, um, plan changes for the Commonwealth's Accountability Formula. Can you explain more about what that is? Um, I've, I've been seeing different things floating around there and I'm wondering if that, if we're looking at the same piece.
Sure. So the Accountability Formula is a system by which the schools independently and then the district as a whole receives their level, right? The level designation. And there's been some changes because under the federal regulations for Every Student Succeeds Act or ESSA, um, the state had to set up its own agreement under ESSA. So, um, I believe it's slated for a late October meeting. Um, we're going to be talking a little bit more about accountability and having real data and really trying to get into that formula a little bit more. So it's just kind of a high-level answer until we have a chance to get into that presentation and illustrate it through the data.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yeah, because that, you know, there's these initiatives to look at accountability a little bit more holistically and bring other pieces. And I was wondering if it's at that level or it sounds like it's not quite there yet.
It's still based on calculations.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's the idea though, is to bring it more.
Over time, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks, Sonya.
Well...
Zach, anything you want to highlight from your report?
Uh, my report just touches upon some professional development happening in October and, uh, some updates at the Morse Pond School with their science labs. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Zach?
Did you give us the revisions?
Um, Sonya.
Heavy, huh?
It's a lot, a lot of paper. Yeah, Andrea.
I'm like talking too much. Um, I got a chance, um, to see the, the science lab at Morse Pond and it looks beautiful. And I think that the teachers sound really itching to get in there and use them. Um, so that's really great. Um, as part of the, I saw the renovation, you talked about, um, all the different pieces that are in there. There are materials as well or does that require a separate budget piece?
No, so, uh, what's outlined here is all the materials that have already been purchased. Uh, the clear touchscreens, um, Cindy Toove's and her department helped with. And today during the professional development day, the teachers had some training on how to use that technology effectively. Um, everything listed here and more has already been purchased in the schools.
And that's expendable materials as well? It's what sort of I'm thinking about the actual...
Yeah, we have the materials that will be there, um, equipment, those types of things. And we've also budgeted for consumables that we anticipate replacing every year.
Fantastic, thank you.
I can't wait to see it. Meet the teacher next week and all go check it out.
Meet the teacher, it'll be ready.
I'm hoping, I'm excited. Any other questions for Zach? Thanks, Zach.
Thank you.
Charlie, um, you already gave us...
That was it. It was all about the peacock, so.
It was awesome. Thank you. Got it. Cindy wasn't able to be here tonight, but gave us her report. We can save our questions for her another time. Joannie, anything you'd like to highlight?
Just the work is continuing since I last reported out two weeks ago in terms of making sure that we have any last resignations, any retirements. We're looking at filling positions that we know, people who are retiring within the next couple of months or throughout the school year and being proactive about that. We'll be following.
Any questions for Joannie? Do we have any openings right now? Are we all staffed up?
We have a couple, uh, we have a few openings in some stubborn areas, but we do have long-term substitutes in those positions right now.
Thanks. Patrick? Anything you want to highlight?
Yes, the, um, uh, it was, there was a request for a cheat sheet for the capital, uh, projects. Uh, I think on the second page there is a draft of that. Just take a look at it if you want me to, uh, add, delete, change, uh, as a cheat, cheat sheet, just let me know. And the, um, the third page of the document is, uh, what we agreed to was just a, a listing of the warrants that had been, uh, signed off, um, by, by the, the representative of school committee members, uh, for the first quarter.
Any questions for Patrick? Can I, yeah.
So yes, about the book drops for the surplus school books. So does that help? Does that help us?
Yeah.
It helps to be able to donate them. There is no monetary, um, in return, you know, mon- monetary allocation. Um, we got good news today. At about 12, 12:30, they're actually coming to take them all tomorrow. So it's, it was a late word. It's the same company, Big Hearted Books, that does have the drop. Um, at East, they were coming directly onsite to pick everything up because too much, it would have overwhelmed the drop. But they just confirmed it tomorrow.
Excellent. Does that answer your...
What, was there, uh, there's a follow-up to that about getting, getting money for textile, for those textile bins, right?
So my question was, could we fill the Big Heart book with the surplus from the district? And I know that that was a lot. And then my follow-up question was, could Big Heart, I'm not saying that, Big Hearted Books come and give us a lump sum? Like what would be the difference if we just filled that, um, receptacle at East? If we just kept filling it, filling it and they just kept coming and coming? Wouldn't they have to, they would give us money if that was full that way? Why, why don't they throw us bone when we're giving us the chunk? When we're giving them the tuck? It may be the nature of this look.
So they do give money?
Yes, Dr. Dale gets money every time they come and pick up.
Okay.
They will just only...
This is only from, this is only from Big Hearted Books? Not from that, those other bins, those textile bins?
She gets money from the textile bins also. We, we can pursue them a little bit more. I think it was the volume and the fact that they were coming to us to pick things up. I see. That may have impacted that, but we can, we can continue to pursue it a little bit more.
I'd be surprised if there aren't caveats in those agreements that you can't put your textbooks in them because they're trying to make money on it too. So, yeah. But I think for me, the question is, do we actually get money back from those bins?
If I had my, um, yes, the, the short answer is yes.
The school district, PTO does.
The PTO does.
The PTO, no. The PTO doesn't. It goes to the principal and then she puts it in her account.
And I think all the schools probably handle it differently, I would guess.
I think we need to follow that up.
So let's look into that.
We need to have a clear answer for it.
I wish that I had my, um, my PTO treasurer's report with me. I didn't.
But it would be nice to know not just, not just what you're doing. Because all the schools might be different. So we should, we should know.
We need to know.
Because if anyone ever asks us, we need to know.
Right.
What those are for and where it goes.
Right, right.
How is it accounted for?
And I don't think that it's a lot.
I'm sure it is.
I, I had reached out to a, um, prior treasurer from a few years ago and she said, some, one time it was like $50. One, one time it was like $800, but that was, you know, random. So, um, but you know, $800 is a lot.
Those bins are always full over at Mullen Hall. I mean, it's like, if, so if there, if there is any revenue.
Yeah.
That would be, that'd be great to know.
That would be great, yeah. Yep. So thank you for the cheat sheet because I really wanted it. Um, and I'm, I'm hoping that people will sort of have this on hand when going to their precinct meetings because I think between all of us, we have a lot of precincts covered. Um, if we attend our precinct meeting and there are questions about these items, we will have information on hand. So I really appreciate that. Um, the fourth thing on your list about the fees charged by the district. So, um, John had requested an agenda item to talk about fees, um, for parking at the high school. And Nancy and I had talked about how we should, if we're gonna, if the school committee is going to look at it, we should look at all the fees we charge and how that impacts our budget for good or bad. So I think the plan is to have that information for our workshop? Is that what we're hoping?
Yes, the fees are a much larger conversation in terms of the budget. And so Patrick and I have had a couple of conversations around that. And we also wanted to, some time to look at what other districts are doing in terms of fees in comparison to what we do. And, and again, how that impacts or influences the budget.
So we can have a real conversation.
Okay. I was also approached by, um, a few, more than a few families, um, and people in the community asking about the... I don't know why, right now, parking lot stickers are a hot topic in the community, but, um, multiple people have approached myself and John as well, so.
So this is time to buy them.
That must be.
But I just thought that we should, if we're going to talk about fees, we should probably, rather than talk about parking fees now because this is when they're happening and the next one, we talk about something else. Let's talk about all our fees and why we charge them and what the impact is.
I like it.
Okay, great. Um, any other questions for Patrick? Okay. Uh, thanks, Patrick. Report from the chair. So I don't know if everyone got this giant...
I did.
Everyone got this?
I got it.
Okay. Okay. So I don't know who is planning on attending the conference, but hopefully someone will be going, and if you can let me know, we need to identify, we have to vote, a delegate, right? Do we have to vote? So hopefully at our next meeting, or the one, hopefully at our next meeting, we can vote for a delegate to represent us at the conference, so if you are thinking...
You can still register.
Yeah, you just don't get the discount, great. But, you know, take a look at it, there are a lot of really interesting things to attend, and whoever is going to go, if you could let me know, that would be great. Oh, also, at the, the letter that you just got passed around, Terri, who's not here tonight, because she had an emergency, is going to be receiving an award, very well-deserved, and that is on Friday, the 3rd, during dinner, so hopefully Terri will be there. We do know she'll be, at least for Friday. It'd be nice to be there to celebrate with her as well.
If we could find out what time dinner was, maybe we could all try to...
Oh, that would be so nice.
Kind of show some support for her.
That would be great. I'll find out.
Even if you can't go the whole time.
Can I just mention, I know Terri has a lot of fans in Falmouth, but she also has a lot of fans across the region, especially from her work on the collaborative, where she meets school committee members and all, so she's very well-respected across the region.
That's great. I'm not surprised either, glad everybody loves her as much as us. There was a question that came up from Megan about getting an opportunity to screen the film Not Yet, and I think I heard back from almost everyone that they were interested in seeing it, so we're going to work on a time that we can all get together and screen it, and then hopefully have a discussion afterward. That's all I've got. Committee member reports. Anyone?
I just have a reminder about the FEF in Action, which is October 3rd, so it's next Tuesday from 6:30 to 8:00 at Falmouth Public Library in the Herman Room.
Thank you. Any other reports?
And that's actually surrounded by many meetings, so there's a policy subcommittee meeting at 4 o'clock that day.
Evaluation, then.
Evaluation at 5:15, so October 3rd is a big day.
Any requests for future agenda items? Any requests for follow-up information?
I'm just curious, I don't know if this is the right time to ask or not, but I haven't heard anything from curriculum subcommittee or the wellness subcommittee, just kind of wondering if I should reach out to that, am I just sitting waiting?
No, I know, I was just thinking that too, because now we're finally in full swing with this, you know, school underway. No, you don't, I don't think you should have to do anything, but I think that's a good point, that we should get going. So, yes, we will get going. Thank you for bringing it up.
So, and as far as follow-up, we're going to get the solid information about those bins.
Yes, bins.
And maybe, it doesn't have to be immediate, but some parent outreach around the safe school piece.
Safe school.
Yeah.
All right, great. So I have, our next meeting is Tuesday, October 10th, two weeks, and that's all we have for tonight. Who's going?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn our school committee meeting.
Is there a second? A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Word's earned.